Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for Candidates for Sultan City Council. I'm your moderator this evening, Karen Madsen. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. And with us, we have candidates for Sultan City Council for Position 1, Connor Morgan and Jean Rudd, and candidate for Position 6, Christina Sivright. Candidates not participating in this forum are Stephanie Aldrich for Position 2, and Corey Dearborn for Position 3. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for your willingness to serve the community if you're elected, and for taking the time to participate in this forum so your constituents can get to know you. It's the policy of the League to be nonpartisan, therefore, we never endorse or oppose candidates or parties. However, we do take positions on issues which we have studied and upon which we've reached consensus. Ground rules for this forum were sent ahead of time to all the candidates. And for our, for our audience, let me take a moment to explain how the question and answer period will work. Opening and closing questions have been shared with the candidates. Other questions have not been shared, however, we have made each candidate aware of the issue areas the forum plans to cover. And by the way, thank you to the community members who sent us recommendations about those issue areas. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. 90 seconds will be allowed for answers to the final question, and I'll remind you of that at the beginning of that question. We're using a countdown timer that's visible to all the candidates. It shows elapsed time, and it alerts the candidate when there are 15 seconds left, and again, when time is up. Time limits on answers will be strictly enforced, and when you see the timer turn red, when you hear the chime, you're done talking. The order of the questions was predetermined in a random way. I'll change it up each time. As it turns out, Ms. Sivright, you will lead off on the first question, followed by Mr. Morgan, and then Ms. Rudd. On the next question, Mr. Morgan, you will lead off, followed by Ms. Rudd and Ms. Sivright, and so forth. So with all of that, let's begin. Ms. Sivright, I'm sorry, you take the lead on this first question, which is, what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position? You have 60 seconds. Ms. Sivright, take your mute off.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I'm currently serving in Position Number 6, and I have multiple years of experience in both city and state government, which provides me, I believe, with a good understanding of both city policies and procedures. I have experience in leadership, workforce development, vocational instruction, and social and health services in my private life and my work. I believe that this combination of skills helps enhance my ability to be a well-rounded council member for the city of Sultan, and also to look more holistically at the challenges and goals that are in front of the city at this time. In addition, I've been a Sultan Harvest Board Member, elected and appointed to various volunteer leadership roles, actively participate in community service projects, and have received multiple awards and acknowledgements for those efforts. I'm proud to live in the city of Sultan.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sivright. Mr. Morgan?
Good evening. My name is Connor Morgan, and I'm a candidate for Position 1 on the Sultan City Council. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Sultan School District, Sky Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Sultan Library, and Turk TV for helping us out this evening. I've spent my entire life in Western Washington, and I've always loved building community and serving the public. A few relevant experiences of mine include my time at Western Washington University, where I served as an Assistant Resident Director. While there, I managed the daily operations of a 600-person residence hall. I was responsible for a $5,000 budget, which meant that I had to review all of our purchasing orders to ensure that no public funds were wasted, mismanaged, or misused. I also managed 16 employees in that role. I'm currently employed as an attorney, where I practice commercial law and bankruptcy law, and I've done so for over two years. I'm responsible for representing people across the socioeconomics of our clientele. I've developed a key knife for reviewing budgets and bankruptcy forms, so I know I've got the analytical tools needed to keep our city on solid financial ground. I'm well qualified, and I look forward to answering your questions this evening.
Thank you, Karen. Ms. Rudd?
Hi. I'd like to echo what Connor was saying about thank you to the community that brought us this forum. Year after year, you've been doing a great job, and we really appreciate it. So I think my strongest qualification is my years of experience in both retail management, manufacturing management. I was Director of the Shepherd of the Valley Preschool for 14 years. So I've had a lot of leadership roles as a member of my congregation, as President of the Council, and representative to the Senate Assembly. I've been familiar with the budgeting process for small businesses, for multimillion-dollar budgets. So a wide range of experience, bringing up my family, lived here since 1990, and been active in the community, love Sultan, and I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you so much.
Sorry, Karen, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Morgan, you'll take the lead. I said to Ms. Rudd, you're very welcome. Thank you. Mr. Morgan, you'll take the lead on this next question. What are the biggest challenges facing Sultan, and what are its greatest strengths?
Certainly. Great question. I think the biggest challenges, in my book, are two. Growth and public safety. The city has grown by almost 20% since 2010, and the county actually exceeded its growth target for 2020 by 3%. So we have to manage the growth before it manages us. The homes are already here. There's more people coming, so we have to develop plans and procedures to make sure that our infrastructure stays in line with that continued growth. The second issue is public safety. We're a town of 5,500 people. We're going to reach 6,000 soon. We have one deputy on call during the daytime and one deputy on call during the nighttime. It's my understanding that we can't push for another deputy at the moment, but in my book, I think you have to keep pushing, even if you're being told no. You have to keep raising that issue. The biggest strength is the people. This is a very resilient town. It's a very welcoming town. It's a tight-knit community. I know that we can do anything when we come together as a community, and I look forward to hopefully leading this community in the next four years. Thanks.
Ms. Rudd, your thoughts on that?
Well, I think you're correct, that the biggest challenge is the growth that we're experiencing already. We've been experiencing for many, many years. And the Growth Management Act of 1990 was enacted by the legislature. And I think people need to realize that the council is constrained by the Growth Management Act, and we have to come up with revisions to that from time to time. So the housing that's going in, I know a lot of people are upset with the housing that's going in, but we have to take our fair share. So I think the things that I hear from people most when I'm talking to them is that they're concerned about their taxes, they're concerned about education and economic opportunities for their children. I think we're going to have a lot of sea change with the environment in the next six years, that if I'm elected, will be serving for the next six years.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sivright?
Thank you very much, Karen. I echo the issues at hand. Safety, traffic, and growth and revitalization are kind of the overarching picture. Safety is a number-one priority for me. I also have been advocating for additional officers. It looks like that's something we won't be able to look at until our 2023 budget process for a couple of different reasons, but I will be advocating for additional officers. I know right now Chief Martin is currently working on creating a public safety committee to kind of address the gap in between that, the now and the then. Traffic, Highway 2, if anybody tells you there's an easy fix, they're not being forthright with you. There is no easy fix to Highway 2, so we need to advocate as we can to the state and address the roundabouts and things that we can do as a community. And last, revitalization.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sivright. Ms. Rudd, you'll take the lead on this next question. And that will be, what measures do you support to keep housing options affordable in Sultan?
Well, the council's been talking about that a lot lately, too. There's talk about having an overlay on the zoning to allow for more dense development. There's talk about smaller lot sizes. There's talk about mother-in-law-type arrangements. I'm really not excited about that mother-in-law part, because once you've built something, it's there. And mother might not be there, but the house will. So there are some things that I support that the council is doing already. I think there are other avenues that we could go with. What I'd like to see is, when we're paving over these spots, I'd like to see a little bit more concern about what's going to happen with the stormwater runoff and the other impacts that the development has in the environment that we can contain.
Ms. Sivright?
Thank you. When it comes to housing, I think there's some new initiatives being set out by the county council that we should support. That does include, as Jean had mentioned, some mother-in-law homes and some other avenues to, for people who can't afford homes, having that additional home on site for another family member would be value-added to some individuals, I do believe. Also, I think when we're dealing with these problems, we have to think about them very carefully and thoughtfully, because there's, and almost with fearless conviction, because there's so many different laws, legislation, rules, and regulations that trying to navigate the system to actually come up with something that will benefit people without the additional cost is a hard, hard road to navigate. So I do believe we have to have some authentic devotion to that topic to move forward in a positive manner.
And Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. Yeah, it's an excellent question. Housing affordability is a major challenge, especially as people are starting to, you know, move through that housing ladder from apartment to purchasing their first home to getting into their second home. I think there's two main ways the city can work forward in a productive manner to try to address these issues. The first, as Ms. Sivright mentioned, is working with the county and other stakeholders at all levels of government to try to provide a regional plan. This is not an issue that's unique to Sultan. If you look at housing prices in Monroe, if you look at housing prices elsewhere in Snohomish County, they have skyrocketed in recent years. So I think working with our partners at all levels of government is true number one. And then number two, I think we should take an all-the-above approach. I think accessory dwelling units, ADUs, could be an idea that we should at least try and see if it works. And then building off of that, if we can provide resources to people, whether that's just information on how to navigate the home-buying process, I think the city should look into that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sivright. Please take the lead on this one. More than once, I've heard you mention traffic issues on US 2. How should the city address those issues? Please unmute, Ms. Sivright.
Thank you. There are some things that we are looking at at this time. We're looking at roundabouts. We're partnering with the region and the state. Because I think another thing is, to make our money go farther, to make these projects happen, we have to partner with region and state at a state level, so we get the biggest bang for our buck. I don't think there's going to be an immediate fix, but I do believe that focusing on our intersections and roundabouts, to get the stop signs out, to get traffic moving, is something that we can do on a shorter term and make a substantial difference. When it comes to the bigger issues at hand, that's at a state funding level, even a federal level, to be perfectly honest. So we have to continue to advocate to our legislators for that funding and realize that outer areas also use our road to get to Eastern Washington, and that the value and importance of that.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, US 2?
That's the million-dollar question that, when I've been out doorbelling, people have always asked me. When I ask people, what's one thing you'd like to see the city work on the next five to 10 years? Traffic is the number-one priority. And I think there's three steps to what the city can do. Step one, I think, is to take an inventory as to what the available options are. How much are they going to cost, and who is responsible for that? As Ms. Sivright mentioned, there's some things that the city can control directly. There's some things the city frankly cannot from a legal standpoint. Step two is then, after we do that inventory, figure out what the city's plan is going to be and how we're going to communicate with our community partners at the state, county, and federal level to make sure that we're all on the same page, rowing in the same direction towards a solution that'll be beneficial for everyone here in the Sky Valley. And the final piece is communication. When I talk to people about traffic, they're aware that it's not going to be a one-year fix or even maybe a five-year fix, but what they do want is communication from the city saying, here are action items, here's what we need to do next, here's where we're going to be in three years, five years, 10 years.
And finally, Ms. Rudd, your thoughts on US 2?
Yes, I think the other two candidates have made it very clear that US 2 is not just a Sultan problem. The state needs to be involved. The county needs to be involved. I do support an east-west corridor that would relieve some of the anxiety that people have about getting around town. I don't think we're there yet. I don't think we've got any kind of consensus on how to do that. I think one of the things that the state could do for us would be to relieve some of the traffic on this Route 2 and allow for a better pass-through in some of the more southern areas of Snohomish County. There are a lot of things that we can do with roundabouts, as Christina was saying, but I think we need to bear in mind that a roundabout is not going to help the people trying to get in and out of their driveways that are not particularly adjacent to the roundabout. And stop signs do give you a little bit of a gap sometimes. They'll back the traffic up and give you a gap.
Mr. Morgan, next question. You lead off, please. What's your strategy for working productively with council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas or life experiences may be different from yours?
Absolutely. You definitely don't want seven council members and the mayor who all think one thing, and that's all we ever do, and we don't disagree. Group think is a horrible thing, and in government, it's, you know, one of the worst things that can lead to failure. When it comes to talking with people whose views are different than mine or experiences are different than mine, I was taught at a young age, you are given two eyes, two ears, and one mouth for one reason, and that's because it's better to listen first and ask questions and understand people and their experiences and where they're coming from, because there's probably a lot more that I don't see when I am disagreeing with someone. So step one for me is definitely to listen first. Step two, ask clarifying questions to make sure I fully understand where that person's coming from. And step three is be flexible. Don't be entrenched in a position. It's quite possible that someone's idea that's contrary to mine is the right idea, and I just need to listen to it and gain that perspective. And so I think just treating them as a normal person and listening first before speaking is my way of working.
Ms. Rudd, your thoughts?
Well, here's where my experience in business and working as a team member in production helps a lot. I've been a trainer for a lot of different kinds of people and a lot of different kinds of projects, and listening is very, very essential. But in the process of listening, we also need to reflect what we've heard and let the person know that the message that we've received is what we've received and verify that it was the message that they were trying to send. So listening to the feelings and emotions behind the statements is also another component of active listening. There are many different techniques that we've been trained over the years with dealing with teamwork in production. So I could bring all that with me and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sivright?
Thank you again, Karen. I think you have to look at your council, your mayor, your citizens like a prized photo album. Review it often and recall the priceless lessons you've learned from past and present experiences. It's impossible to lead anyone to anything without facing opposition. I think it's essential in those moments that you face criticism to do it with respect and listen with an open mind. If someone plays the role of a chronic critic, though, I will say if somebody showers me with pessimism, if necessary, I will defend my position and take action when necessary. Criticism is an occupational hazard of leadership, and I do my best to handle it gracefully.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rudd, take the lead on this one, please. What should be your city, or what should be Sultan's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Okay, so I just muted myself and unmuted myself. I think I'm good to go now.
Okay.
Yes, Sultan is still predominantly a Caucasian town, but that's changing, and I think it's all for the good. Representative Councilman Nagel just really, excuse me, just brought forward the Juneteenth celebration. I think that's a step in the right direction. We've had some recent controversy just this week about Columbus Day celebration versus Indigenous people. I think we need to think things through, because times are changing. People are coming into the community, and we need to embrace that. I think we can all improve when it comes to that sort of thing. It's a personal responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Sivright.
Thank you. I've got a couple different thoughts on this, but I'm going to say I think that change starts at the top. It's everybody's responsibility, but I also believe it starts at the top. And we do need to increase our awareness, because we are a predominantly white community still. I have had the opportunity in the last few weeks to meet a couple of new families that are moving into town that are amazing, and I think we can learn a lot by opening our eyes to the inequities in race and race. I also think when you have something like Columbus Day that came up recently, that there's room for Columbus Day and Indigenous Day. I don't think you have to choose. That we still need to be open to multiple views on things. Also, as a city, I think we can hire and advance a more diverse workforce if they meet the skills and qualifications of a job. Get involved in what's called the Fair Change Hiring Initiative.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. I think, as Ms. Sivright said, it starts at the top, and I think the city needs to send a message that everyone is welcome and that we want to provide opportunities for all, and that we want to meet people where they're at and let them know that we're not, we're not having no tolerance policy when it comes to racism, sexism. I think another thing that the city can look into doing, if they haven't already, is something called universal design, which is a concept in design planning where if a new building is built, for example, it's fully compliant with, not as, it's fully compliant with ADA, but also even if it wasn't fully compliant with ADA, it would allow people to access it regardless of ability. And I think finally, again, going out into the community and meeting new people, you never know what you don't know. And as a white person, I don't know what it's like to be a woman or a black person or anything like that, but I can always be asking questions of what I can be doing better. And I think being humble and asking questions and what you can be doing better than what you should be doing.
Ms. Sivright, you go first on this next question, and it is, what are the most pressing environmental issues your town faces, and what would you propose to address them?
Unmute. Okay. So environmentally, I think cities need nature, but nature also needs our city. We need the people in our city to be aware of and care about the environment and what's going on around us. I don't think there's any simple way that we can protect and maintain the beauty, the nature, the rural landscapes if we also are supporting the spread of highways and sprawl in our countryside. So there's kind of a fine line there that we have to look at to manage and maintain both the growth and our areas. Healthy, robust cities where people want to live are critical in the protection of our nature. I think what we're doing right is preserving our parks. I think what we're doing right is maintaining our own water system. And I think what we're doing right at this time is by upgrading our water waste damage.
Mr. Morgan, your thoughts?
Absolutely. Well, I can tell you that, growing up, we didn't have wildfire smoke on the western side of the mountains in July and August. And the last few years, that has become the norm as we try to navigate that. So what are we going to be doing about the environment on the city level? Well, one thing I think the city should definitely be supporting is more charging stations wherever we can get them. Ford just announced recently that it's F-150 Lightning, fully-electric truck. They've got so many orders that they're opening up a new factory. Electric vehicles are going to be the way of the future, and that future is coming quickly. Second thing that we can be doing is upgrading infrastructure. If we can get more efficient buildings, we can get them LEED certified. You can get grants for solar panels, for, you can get grants for wastewater to use that can be upgraded. And so I think as long as we're upgrading infrastructure and trying to look forward to the future, I think that's how we manage our environmental problems at the city level.
And Ms. Rudd, your thoughts?
Yes, I agree that more charging stations. I was really happy when the charging station next door to the visitor's center went into place, not just to bring people into the town, but to show our commitment to that sort of thing. I think the city can lead in that direction. As we replace equipment that belongs to the city, if we could go in the direction of electronic vehicles and that sort of thing, any kind of new construction that the city is doing needs to have a strong environmental component. So that being said, this is another reason for the east-west corridor. I think we're going to be facing a lot of challenges in the near future with extremes in weather. We've already seen extreme heat. We've already seen extreme cold just in recent couple of years. I think it's going to cycle more and more, and we need to be prepared for that if that means the storm drain system, the stormwater system, upgrading water.
Very much. Thank you. Mr. Morgan, this question is for you first. What is one aspect of public safety which you think could be improved in Sultan to increase effectiveness and equity?
So in the past few months, I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with Deputy Mark Bond. He recently retired, but during that ride-along, I was able to see what it's like from the inside of the police truck. And it's easy to be outside the police truck and say we need to do X, Y, Z, but it's a completely different thing when you're in that truck and everyone's staring at you as you're driving through the town on a 12-hour shift. I think, as was mentioned before, anything that we can do as far as neighborhood watch and empower the citizens of this town to kind of take public safety into our own hands with regards to checking in on neighbors, making sure that everything is in order. And then I think from an accountability standpoint, I think the city can work with the sheriff's office and with Chief Martin to ensure that officers are meeting standards. One of the benefits of having a contract with the county is that we can select the officers and we can dismiss them much easier than we could if we had our own police department. So that's one reason to keep that contract with the county, and I think that's what we keep doing.
Ms. Rudd, your thoughts on that question?
Yes, the arrangement that we have with the sheriff's department is much better than what we've had in the past when we funded our own police force. It gives us a lot more flexibility, but we're going to be running into some budget problems with that, taking on liability insurance for the deputies. So I think that overall, we need to try to fix the problem. And that means the services that we offer, the officers are going out and offering services to our homeless community. If we can expand that, I think it will pay off in the long run. I think we have good people in town. We've done Neighborhood Watch. I think we need to revive that program and expand it. That's about it.
Thank you. Ms. Sivright?
This is hard to break down to one aspect for me, because I think safety is such a big issue overall. I think community involvement is a key piece that we're missing at times. Again, Ms. Rudd mentioned it, the block watch, to revitalize our block watch to support a public safety committee that the chief is currently trying to put in place, I think is very important. Also, supporting our social services. If there was one aspect, I would have an embedded social worker on our police team. We would have an embedded social worker. So when that person that needed those services was ready and said, yes, I need this, we'd have that person to take them to those services and have them provided immediately when they're ready to be, when they're ready. when they're ready to be, when they're ready to accept the offer. I think it's.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd. What initiatives would you support to address food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues among your residents?
Well, I think there are some new federal programs that are coming on board, and they will offer housing and wraparound services for people. I think there's funding available through ARPA and through other sources related to this new program. There's more information about that on my website, electgeneRudd.org. As far as the Food Bank in town, I think they do a great job, but they're very shorthanded. One of the reasons why I'm involved in this race and one of my priorities will be to get more people involved with their government, involved with their local officials. And we have so many races right now that are running unopposed. I'd like to see people feel more trusting of their community and be able to support things like the Food Bank.
Thank you, Ms. Sivright.
Yeah, food insecurities. Boy, that's a tough one for people who have that problem. I have people in my own family that have come from places where they hide food in their cupboards and lock them in drawers because they just want to always know they have that next meal. And it's not a feeling anyone really wants to have. I think our best bet is with the VOA locally. There is initiative. There are some initiatives coming through that the VOA is part of for, to help with food insecurities. We could expand on that. I do also believe, though, the city is not a social service. So what we need to do is find those initiatives that work best or support our community and support those initiatives and the people that are running them. Because I think there's a fine line with the city getting involved in being social services, but we need to support those needs within our community.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Your thoughts?
Well, I think that both Ms. Rudd and Ms. Sivright have touched on the food insecurity piece, and I'm, I'm fully in agreement with what they both have said on that. What I'd like to discuss is more the mental health component of this question, which is what initiatives would you support with regards to mental health issues? I think that all of us have been impacted by the last two years, but for the once-in-a-century pandemic, I'd be sitting on a stage with Ms. Rudd and Ms. Sivright in the high school gym with all of you, but instead I'm behind a camera. And so I think that has really had an impact on a lot of people. I can tell you that it's had an impact on me. It's affected my personality and how I try to interact. I love meeting with people and connecting with them, and we can't do that. So I'd like to see the city expand its resources with regards to its website. If the city can be kind of a clearinghouse for information and can connect people with the next step. The city is not a one-stop shop to solve every problem under the sun, but what we can do is at least take people in and point them in the right direction, like the VOA, the Food Bank, and other resources.
Ms. Sivright, if you take the lead, please, on this next question. What are the issues, if any, in Sultan which have arisen as a result of the pandemic? And how would you address those issues if you believe they exist?
Thank you very much. Well, we closed City Hall to the public. That was the first thing that went, happened with the pandemic. And then we moved to over phone and online communications like this meeting we're having today. Some of those things I think have been value-added because they've allowed people who maybe wouldn't have participated to begin participating through this avenue. So that's a good thing. Well, I do recognize the importance of in-person interactions, though, with the city, and I'm glad to say we're getting to a point where we are getting more towards that. One of my biggest concerns about the pandemic or the effect is our inability to embrace our new community members. Like was mentioned by Mr. Morgan, people feel as if they are isolated, but you move into a new community and you don't have the ability to meet people and embrace it and feel like you're part of it. So I look forward to that returning on some level in the near future.
Mr. Morgan?
I think there's been two main issues from the pandemic, one of which the city has already addressed, and one that I, if elected, I would love to be, take the lead on to help them with. The first thing the city did that I greatly applaud was the online bill pay with utilities. Like Ms. Sivright mentioned, the pandemic hit and we had to close City Hall. So that meant that if you wanted to make a payment or if you had to set up a new account, you just moved to town, you need to get the lay of the land, it had to be by phone, council meetings on Zoom and that kind of thing. So the city was very well-equipped and was very flexible to move to that online bill pay, online forum for city council, et cetera. One issue that I'd like to see addressed is more community outreach when it comes to big-picture planning. So with regards to new parks or a new connector road through town, that community outreach piece is a huge component because you need that buy-in from your local residents. And I would love to take the lead on that, knocking on doors, hosting forums, getting feedback from the community is valuable because that's the best way to find out what's in the public interest.
Ms. Rudd, your thoughts?
Well, I think there have been a couple of other issues. I think Ms. Sivright and Mr. Morgan have both touched on a lot of the issues. But one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the need for broadband, the need for reliable internet connections. I think the city could do something in that direction. Another thing that people are still struggling with is childcare. A lot of people had to end up staying home because of being restricted from going to work in the early part of the pandemic. And not having schools in session, that was a big chunk of childcare in a sense. But I know that the church that I go to, we were asked if we could host more childcare, and we were not able to do so. So I think having, encouraging the community in that direction of being able to have resources, the city providing the information how to get.
Very much. Appreciate that. We're down to our last question. When the timer comes up, you'll see it reflect the fact that you have a minute and a half, an embarrassment of riches of time to answer this question. Mr. Morgan, if you would lead off, please. And this last question is, what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
Certainly. Well, I think one final piece that I like to bring to the attention that we haven't had the chance to discuss tonight is, and they kind of go hand in hand, is public works and our parks. I think one of the top priorities for any city is to have a fully functional public works department, and they do a fantastic job making sure that the city is always looking at its best. I would continue to support them working in hand when it comes to procuring equipment, when it comes to hiring staff to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the city, that your sidewalks are in good shape, that your potholes are fixed, that right-of-way is our mode, and that we can present our best foot forward to people who are living in our city and people who are coming here and passing through. A second thing I'd like to raise is parks. I don't know about you guys, but this summer when we had that heat wave, my only option for staying cool was to repeatedly jump in my shower over and over again. What I'd like to see the city look at is if we can do some sort of splash pad or some sort of way to help people cool off. Our summers are only going to get hotter, and right now there aren't really a whole lot of options for people, especially people with families. So if there's any way we can do that as we look to upgrade and expand our park infrastructure, I'd love to see the city do that. And then in talking with people, I mean, going door to door, I know there's plans to develop a park on the Sultan Basin area. I'd love to be a part of that with community outreach to get stakeholders from everyone involved so that everyone feels empowered and a part of the decision-making. Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks again to the League. I appreciate it.
Ms. Rudd, your final thoughts for the evening?
Well, we've covered a lot of ground. I think the things that I mentioned before about getting people involved and trusting their government, trusting that their vote is important, trusting that we hear them, that these things are basic, fundamental part of our community. And I think it's been a divide in our community that there are people who absolutely want nothing to do with public service or government. And I think the city needs to reach out to these people. I think we need to come together as a community. Neighborhood watch can help with that. There are public forums that the city has, events downtown. But, yeah. Okay, I'd just like to recommend that people go to the website, electgeneRudd.org. Send me a message. Tell me what your thoughts are. Ask questions, and let's get the conversation going. That's really all I, all I need to bring forward tonight. I thank you for having us, and the questions were great. Enjoyed it. Thank you.
It's been our pleasure. Thank you. Ms. Sivright, final thoughts?
All right, it looks like I get to wrap things up. So thank you again. I'd like to just echo, thank you, everyone who put this together for us this evening. Thank you for, to Mr. Morgan and Ms. Rudd for showing an interest in serving our community. Again, we've got multiple unopposed positions at this time, and I, I am one of those who's running unopposed, but I still want to earn every vote I receive. So I also encourage citizens, they're welcome to reach out to me. I am happy to address any questions or concerns. I encourage people to get involved in their community. I ran four years ago on pride, leadership, and service, and I'm just looking to run for another four with that same logo in mind. I have pride in my community. I'm happy to be a lead, work in a leadership position for this community, and I'm here to serve. I also think it's important, or I'd like to mention, that this is a nonpartisan position, and I treat it as such. I have my own opinions on things, but I'm here to listen to this community holistically and as a whole. And I really encourage people to attend, attend city council meetings, ask questions. We're here to serve you and proud to be, be part of this community. So thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. And again, for the other council members who are running. Thank you so much.
The League appreciates these candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of this forum and others will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and our YouTube channel. You can find links to both of those at our website at LWV SnoHo. That's LWVSNOHO.org. We encourage you to explore additional information about these and all other candidates. The Snohomish County Voters Pamlet will be mailed to residences starting October 13th. Vote411.org, sponsored by the League of Women Voters, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. Finally, general election ballots will be mailed on the 14th of October, and Election Day is November 2nd. Please vote. This concludes our candidate forum. Thank you all for joining us.